Very beautiful. An Egyptian feminist writer and activist. Eighty-nine years old when she passed on. There's a very interesting quote that I saw her this morning. And it reads: "I was very good-looking when I was younger. This created a lot of problems for me. When you're intelligent and beautiful, you face a lot of problems. If you're beautiful and stupid, then it's easy." I agree with her. So sixteen percent of the world population is made up of youth. Majority in the least forty-eight developed countries are young people. And as words smash, we took the initiative to join the rest of the country, Zambia, to celebrate youth because on the 12th of March, we have Youth Day locally. So today, the 27th of March, we feel that we shouldn't let the month slide. We should be part of a fun. And so we are dedicating this entire show to young people. Celebrating youth is our theme. And so all the poets that are going to come up to this stage are going to hear something in that line at least. My name is Baniswachisakula, aka Banban, and I will be your host this afternoon. I hope you have enough data. Please do not leave us. Let's move together until we're done. So not to say so many things. Yes, I'm in the face, you'll be seeing, I waste more of your time compared to everyone who comes here. The first performer, I don't know what relation they have to angels, but their name is supposed to be an angel being. If you follow Christianity or Judaism and geology, then you must have heard of Seraph. Help me welcome to the stage our first performer for the afternoon. His name is Seraph.
The name was definitely borrowed from... The name of angels for the Hebrew god, which is Seraphim, but I decided to shorten it. And that was at a time when I was like a god, you're a human being. Yeah, back in the days when I was a normal bite it. But things have changed a little. But I was stitching the Seraph anyway because I can't speak up in name. It's a whole process. So the poem I'm going to be reading is basically a call for someone, you know, specifically to dive into, to do what's like science and philosophy. Because I feel those are fields that we have not explored as a country. Yeah, so I consider myself an advocate for science and philosophy. So yeah, my piece is called Dear African Child. Dear African child, I thought it just had even handed to write you this little piece because your feet seem not to be tearing out anytime soon. From running around the parameters of that pathetic stereotype, typical perceptual box the world has created for you and you seem not to notice. I find that inordinately startling, needless to say, alarm me. It's nothing short of a miracle that you take pride in your roots and dancing to the throbbing drums of your ancestral folklore, arguably a noble cause, hence now. Plus, you were born along an ancestral lineage whose history is spent in blood on the hands of long-dead colonial masters whose slavish thirst still being used to vilify faces with unusually red cheeks. And it's not your fault too. Humanity plays dice and depending on which mouth passes the horror tradition, you're just a tiny piece in a narrative structure bigger than your patriotism. African child. It's in the credence with which my lips say it. African child. It's in the surge of emotions overlaid with the motherland familiarity, with identity and solidarity as its backbone. African child. It's in that exclamation, it's in the exclamation that seeps through the hard texture of your hair and your black skin that apparently doesn't crack. That melanin glow casting curves that move with a melodious rhythm every man knows how to dance to. But it is those collective abstract ideas that have sunk so deep into your perceptions of identity that you can't seem to fly past your cultural foundations, your own skin or the beauty of your hair. Such astonishing triviality and you dare say, "Don't judge me by my hair." Quite frankly, you're making that hard not to do, hence the purpose for this open letter. So I submit, why not take some time tonight and stare at the sky? Those print pricks of light are gigantic violent balls of fire, burning out tons of hydrogen fuel, exploding and collapsing into their own mass and at times leaving behind huge black holes doing mind-shaving things that a brilliant mind changed to a wheelchair, figured out with the head of a simple equation. Or simply stop and wonder how a tiny piece of rock you're parasitically occupying is part of a thirteen-point, thirteen-point-eight-billion-year-old inflationary universe with a repulsive gravity and size that can't seem to cease from reminding us that in cosmic eyes we are as about as insignificant as some microbes in some point in the outskirts of Brazil. Looking into space is peering into the past, seeing the story of the birth of the universe saturated by radiation we have come to know as microwave background radiation, or CMB for short. And with the aid of great minds like Arnold Penders and Robert Wilson, we have come to grasp the validity of in-flight disinformation. Once for all time, it's beyond argument that the universe in the past sprung from a point of infinite density as opposed to what's proposed by the steady-step theory. So dear African child, it's time to fly past the small limities that comes from the needless preoccupation of cultural identities and shallow skin pride and be part of the minds sharpened in academic symbols, buried into cultural dissonance and weaving the natural world. Because as intelligent, cautious agents, we're a living part of the universe, trying to understand itself. So I invite you to take my hand and let's go chasing exo-planets and maybe even possibly be among the first Africans to step foot on Mars. Okay, that's a little presumptuous, but you get the point. It's okay to be smart and go chasing after space exploration. And that is something that we haven't dived into so much as Africans. So I call upon you, dear African child, to consider the fit because it's one of the greatest ventures humanity has to offer. Yeah.
Okay, that seems angelic and from whatever room he was operating from. I kept on trying to decode. I hope you didn't have as much difficulties as I had because that was deep. So thank you so much. Let me read you something short. The beautiful part about them seems that you just get to scribble in the end. "We are children of our forefathers, the remaining generation of African brothers, the beautifully overly begifted sisters. We are black magic, where the good witch makes us voodoo practitioners. Maybe you can think that descendants of Vatataba Keké, Mama Kankasa, and all those who slew back in the day, we are symbols of wealth, yes, luck, wealth and health. We are mold-perfect, a generation overflowing with possibilities. We are power carriers, bridges to the future, transmitters of today's messages to tomorrow, call us couriers. We live in tomorrow-to-day futuristic all the way. We are woven with all the sweet ingredients which define and stop ability. Our superpower surpasses ordinary abilities. Superheroes avenging unfair centuries. But the war is not tacked infinity. We are the poets, the makers of artistic portraits, today's graduates. This is youth excellence." So we're still celebrating young people. And for the next poet, for the next performer, their name is nothing related to angels or anything. It's very short in pronunciation, it's just three letters. Please help me welcome to the stage Zach.
Yeah, so three days ago, I just broke up with my girlfriend. And she never gave me, you know, any romantic reasons towards the breakup. So it's funny how I'm in pain, but I'm not feeling the pain. But she gave again, you know, three reasons over the last conversation we had. Now, the last conversation I had with her was me and her in the living room talking about my music and my poetry. She said, "You're already doing good, Zach, but what's the point of you doing all this? When social stratification is an effect to social change, not only affecting you, but also affecting the youth of your class, when in consideration your expectations that the government should do something about it, nothing really happens, what's the point?" So what's the point of us having sex when the government of the day keeps on [bleep] thing or minute? What's the point? You know, the government doesn't give chance, they keep [bleep] fucking us every day. What's the point of us celebrating Youth Day when we've never taken any single chance to run this country on our day? I mean, this is our special day, Youth Day, but they have never given us any single chance to run our country as youths. What's the point of us celebrating Youth Day when we've never debated anything in parliament on issues affecting us youths? She further said, "Being a youth in this country really sucks. It's like taking up poison to its fullest, but you'll never die." So you still grow with your pain, but what's the point of us having pain when reality is all what we have? I mean, she left me with these government dishes burning right now, Zach.
I thought that tact directly broke was, yeah. So I can't even lie like at this point about my either being sexually active or not. So then he says, "Wait, okay, government, thank you very much." So wow, okay, we're progressing well. At least young people are aware of what is going on around us. And you know, there's this beauty about being awake to what is going on around you. You cannot easily be cheated. Uh, Zach, your ex-girlfriend, I need to meet her if she knows what's up. Okay, so we're still going on and okay, this time no. I'm reading you one poem, but I'm cutting it into pieces. So I hope by the time all the performers are done, my poem will be done too. And I hope it'll make perfect or rather logical sense, but this is poetry, sometimes it does not. You've listened to those poems where from the beginning you're like, okay, maybe in the second stanza I'll get it. And it keeps going. In the third stanza, maybe I might grasp. And then it's done. What was happening? So I hope this won't be on them. "We are today's graduates. This is youth excellence. With a technological code of conduct, we are all that we cannot deny. We are the slave queens and kings. We color our hair, we tattoo our bodies, we believe in god chains and rings. We are so criticized under the country's twenty-four-hour surveillance, looking at us with the wrong eye. We can face books and Facebook for Instagram, tweeting all our feelings, pinning our interests, but all of us know what's up. We are all linked in." Our second performer, our third performer, I was asking Jer about their name because I feel so left behind. So I wanted to read it as something else, but I was corrected, lucky enough. When the performer comes to the stage, I want him to say something about their name for me, for my sake, so that I can understand. Because I was telling myself, chocolate. No. Then the other one. I can't say the other one. So okay, without saying much, when the performer comes to the stage, they're going to tell us about their name because I think there is something amazing about certain stage names, if it's their real name. So please help me welcome Collet with an applause louder than the last one, you guys.
Okay, so the name is Collet, like Colgate, but the G is an L. So yeah, Collet, satisfying Osaka. Collet's, okay, throughout the centuries, we've had people that were put in a certain place to speak a certain truth. You can Google that, the spelling is Q and all that. But for reference, we can start with people like David in the Bible, King Lemuel, Solomon, you know, Azab. We have M'Goni in Africa, Wellesbourn in Brazil. So these guys are kings, some are prophets, some are just people put in a certain place to speak a certain truth. That's what the Collet is. This country, this country is a mess, okay? This country is a mess and we have too many skeletons in our closet, right? We're the youth, the backbone, we've been fed to the dogs. And then in this country, all dogs go to heaven, you know? Leaving us here on earth. So this piece is entitled Earth. "The sons of Ham. We tend to over-underestimate the power of will. Look, our god built our worlds into beam. Laboring, laboring to birth to us the prime cut, yes, the first part of the apex of the first brick of humanity's thirsty pyramid. We're talking pyramids wallowing in a deserted desert west land of quick-fitted, quick-flitting, quick-sand laboring. Laboring to birth to us from his breath, the breath of fresh air. We blew it. Will drives ambition. Ambition drives possible realities into realization. But just because our steering wheels will for us to continue to orbit other luminous bodies shouldn't mean we should still go about in circles, recycling, recycled cycles. Because gentlemen, make no mistake, we bow for the stars. The heavens are our biograms, the firmaments are our cradle, the ocean floor is our springboard, but I'm African. Of course, a house, an array of color within, are lost to die for. So I was talking about dust to dust. A cyclone of phoenix ash. Sky is dark when the rays of the sun ricochet against my black skin, not to produce a spectrum, but its inverse. Array of shadows. I'm African. Of course, a house, an array of color within. But we're seen as predecessors of final products, evident in the way we choose to be human. It's disgusting. Evident in the way we choose to use our middle eyes can let us call because make no mistake, folks, no matter how much we crave to conform to certain laws parallel to certain empirical truths, we still come to realize there's no such thing as gray, gray areas. There's just white or black. Now, these are binary codes. This is one or not. These are stationary roles. This is eat, get eaten. These are statutory calls. This is beat, get beaten. These are salutary cons. This is feed or get weakened. So defenseless, defenseless are stripped backs, bare backpacks of lots of pain. These are labels. These are tags. These are scars. These are stripes. Veins, connotations of our existence as primates of lower states were apes. But in that case, in that case, if I'm that guy on a long walk to freedom, on that one-man race, taking those strides towards a mind emancipation like the two KKKs, I mean both the dictator and the slave, then maybe I'm better off, it's in faith. Taking that leap of faith, ignoring cause for me to pick wisely from which pools of God to sip from because trust me, lips and bounds, they still require flight modes. Some things we have to do them on our own, alone, flow over heads. I didn't think so. Satisfying Osaka. Try Goonos. Collet.
Okay, so he did leave up to his name. At least he ditched out a lot of wisdom on my part. I hope it worked for, worked the same on yours too. So another quote, "To be old and wise, you must first be young and stupid." I don't know if you agree, but one message that I would like us to take away as young people is we are only young ones. And so there are certain mistakes that I think we shouldn't hold back from making as long as they won't cost you an arm or a leg or your heart. Physically, your heart, by the way, like emotionally, just get ready, your heart is in for it. Until we are buried, things will happen. So as long as you don't question an arm or a leg, please make as many mistakes as you can and be as stupid as you can be. You need those stories when you're seventy, when into your eighties, to tell your grandchildren and everything. So guys, please let's live life. Like let's live life, like today's the last day. So when I was thinking about being young once, I thought about water. You know how water in a cup does not last for ever? Like we drink it and then it's dead. The cup, the cup is empty. And then I just reboot something as I'll sit on that side. So I'm going to read you something short before I call on our next performer. "Like water, you last not forever. With every sip, I notice the urgency of need. You don't quench my thirst. Your kisses are so temporal. This temple bates its holiness at your appearance, but like water, the feeling will definitely wash off." Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on to the stage someone who I want to bait up is going to come and drop a lot of proverbial knowledge for us. Help me welcome to Proverbs.
"I've come in peace, my other half as you made at home. I guess I'm incomplete, but when I speak his way, they become complete, so I am the vessel. Vein caught the iota that takes blood away from the heart, which is god-wain and transported into all the parts of the body. Because in Christ we are one body. We are one body, united like magister fans. We all come here to celebrate one goal, which is words much poetry. "Lastly, I've been going through my phone to see if I have a call from God. And guess what wisdom was calling in the street? And I've missed the call that mercy has called upon God here. Because this is the moment, not a turning force, but it's a returning love. Love that does not fall, but it works on water without sinking in because the faith is too strong. This is the love that we have to endure, dear youth. See, I know you have polished your mind. I know you have polished your mind like the galaxy with a great communication everywhere you go. God is there, but avoid to take a selfie for what made in his own image without using a portrait. Without using a portrait. So we are unique. Not even the BBC can tell the good news that we sent to you from the Holy Bible. That's where we find that he turned water into wine, asked the Zambian through a list to tell you that spirit was then made for drinking. But it is the great communication between God and our wakes, awed by volume of gravity, though we don't produce our in quiet place because actions speak louder than words. So we are silent. Order in the court of our mind, listening to God to say you are not the lost son of a direction. You arises from east to west. In fact, you are the fresh of my fresh, born of my born, not from Gabon, but in Christ you are the first born, dear youth. So if you think that your thought has gone astray, please pose a bit. At the first re-yes, meditate day and night so that they can see that you are the light of the world, dear youth. Because during the Passover, during the Passover, he was not the leftover, but he was the greatest bread of life. And his DNA flows in my vein. Back then, I used to imagine if his gene can fit in my gene, but now I have to die so that I can fit in. So if you don't believe in yourself, dear youth, open that window, look inside you. You haven't walked in now from that dream, you have to chase to become the bishop. I guess we are the future in this."
Okay, so since we're young people, there's, there are things that used to happen or things that we used to be told way back that when we're here now, of course, we have different views or different understanding of those things. Like, I don't know if you ever experienced your parents telling you, you will understand when you grow up. I don't know if you understand now what they told you, you understand when you grow up. Has the time come yet for the young people in the room? Has anybody understood what you're told you'd understand now? Because I think there are very few things that I'm starting to relate, to relate to in a way that my parents did way back then when they were saying them. Like I saw a joke, but I think it's very serious. When someone say, "Do you know..." Now I understand why my parents would not allow us play very loud music in the house, like Chishimicho and stuff like that. Because you know, that pressure for looking for money, eh? You're broke and then someone is playing loud music. It doesn't sit very well. So your parents are like, "Himoy, if you don't go and stuff," and you wouldn't understand. Like they're, they're killing my swag or something. But it would be just the brokenness or the loans that they have with the bank and then they're taking it out on you as a child. And then also, there would be times like, okay, those were parents who took TV's to the bedroom. Up to now, trust me, I didn't understand. I don't know if there was better picture quality or signal in their room than in the sitting room. So there are those things which used to happen then that I don't know how we're understanding them now, that some of us are now parents or some of us have grown, we're living on our own. But there are those hard realities, like now we understand why they would say, for the girls, those who cook, why they would tell you things like salad, the name Fakiba and stuff like that. Because now you know the cost of a tomato and things. But one thing of everything that my parents talked about, one thing that I think even now I still want them to treat me as a baby, I haven't understood love, guys.
Scary, you guys. A few days ago, I was invited to lunch with one of Zambia's aspiring presidential candidates. You know, they arranged a meet and greet and they were encouraging us to ask them questions about what they are going to, they're going to do when we put them into power. So I asked this man, whose name I want to mention, to say, "Why have you forecast on inviting the youths here?" And he didn't lie. He said, "Because majority of you, you are the ones that vote." So I noticed that this is something that happens every time we have elections in Zambia. They recognize us, they call us. Now they speak of the things they want to do for us, but when they're in power, they forget. But when it is time for them to be put into power again, they remember us. So that day, I taught that man something. I said, "I dare." So that is the title of my piece today. "We have a plethora of young men of God, not lawyers, not doctors or politicians. These forces of things about heaven and hell are the reasons we are still stuck in a hole, unable to live life like native angels, not demons. Our quintessence is polluted by our inability to own up. Our perspective on development is just valical. We are bewitched, bewitched, I tell you. Our failure to accept we are just pawns and puppets. These old men are just playing poker with us. So instead, we leave everything to the maker. By maker, I mean master of our money and resources, just in government apparel. Here we drink in tranquility with corruption every weekend. We are even proud to say, "Mushikago's Mulimakadi." Bear in mind today that religion is not what I'm promoting. Breaking soul ties, covenants and busting in tongues are not the key to success. Hear me. Because the old have tightened down our spirits. They have practiced witchcraft with our bones. They have dusted and drunk our blood and sat on our heads. They have drunk our blood, sat on our head, and education is their way to ground us to a system of progression, but not growth. Open minds and loud mouths are not allowed or welcome in this country. Educated youths are broken down to pieces to the only career path they admire is being a cadet. Fear grips the mast every day as our nation harbors a collective of men and women that cannot be questioned about death. Gods to man, guns and tear gas to the youths, clapping back to our faces, reminding us we are irrelevant each time. Chains and bondage disguised as cyber bullying built to all those that dare to be youths. Dare to speak, dare to be the voice. So I dare you not to clothe your naked body in corruption. You are young and you are free. Your blood is not for dead men trying to redeem their eulogy. So I dare you to speak. I dare your silhouette to brand youthful. I dare you to bask in your greatness. You are the ones they fear. I dare you to change your suncunalacy, bitterness. Grab the boob by the hole like young men in their prime. Do not reelect the old. Do not be accustomed to a passage of rights, playing pretend democracy. I dare you to ask questions because when they need you again, they come back to you. You are the youths. I dare you to speak."
I dare you to bring to a stop these fringe benefits we do with the politicians. Where like Zach said, I don't think it's a relationship, so instead they call us only for booty calls. Election time and when it's done, we're done. I'm not saying much this time. Let me call upon the state, somebody who's taught me everything I know, by the way. Ladies and gentlemen, allow the applause for... Ladies and gentlemen, allow the applause for the protest poet.
Today, after a long time, I'm shivering over a poem that I wrote. I haven't written in a long time, there's so much truth and so, so much hate, so much protest. I've never written a love poem before, and yes, this is my love letter to him, the first and the last one. Youth of nineteen sixties versus the youth of twenty twenty-one. This was the youth with a dream and a mission driven by a vision and a passion and inspiration drawn from the harshest of all situations. Their burning desire for democracy, recognition drove them to take action and stand for what they believed in. These were role models and indeed the greatest of all leaders, true leaders, who held their visions and the future at the center of themselves and role models who believed that their actions would create the future, a future for them, a future for you, a future for I, at least today. And now, you and I can testify that we have no better story than what we can only tell of history. But this was the youth that knew poverty, tribal clashes and countless limitations through racism and tribalism. This was the youth with no chances, that ones with no privilege, no internet, no login, no log out. These were the young people who had to push boundaries in order to create opportunities, the youth who decided to take to the streets in order to speak against the legacy of the oppressor. They hugged the gun, they romanced the AK forty-seven, they sucked the grenades, they rolled with snakes. These are the ones who pushed boundaries in the bush, they drank with the wild animals. It is due to this great courage and determination that today we know of young Hector Peterson, we know of the KK, the KK, the real KK. We can only know it from history, but who are we, what we stand for? Young people, you are the leaders of tomorrow, who will take over the land of our forefathers after we are all gone? I hear them saying. Before you agree, youth of twenty twenty-one, look in the mirror and ask yourself the question, where do you fit in? Are you the symbol of a generation or regeneration or merely a grasshopper generation? Do you realize the novelty of getting opportunities or you simply fight to get respect and recognition for destroying it? Are you the people of the world that the world has been waiting for? Have you discovered your purpose in other ways? What would the world have lost if you were not born? Ask yourself, are you relevant, irrelevant, levent, vent?
I wanted to repeat, but those words are too many Rs and Ls. I don't want to do it today. So still, please ask yourself, like, really, are you relevant? And if you died today, would anyone even talk about you? Or thirty minutes after your death will cook beans, capen, and capen, and forget about you. We have to ask ourselves because really it is our duty as young people to create the change around us and also the change that we want to see. Exactly, right? Amen, church. Okay, so um, see, I didn't lie when I say that's where I learned everything that I know. Like, if you see me do something and then you're like, wow, that's where I learned all the knowledge. And again, I'm not wasting time even on this one. I'm calling onto stage Swanky Kanji.
This is for all the youths who die. This may sound like fireworks. A no fire used to work between us, but hypocrisy, church, tigali boenda mas. But this is the sound of a pop in champagne. We used to celebrate you and me, my dear friend. You left me alone and I hope I see you again. Inveka chamangenzema ilo, petezo kilapokansi makati bon, but papitamaesion saya, main I miss you. It's like MI triple S, I miss you, I miss. Back then, we used to play a lot of games. We used to imagine different things, imagining our world without no digital, but talking tomatoes, you and me, and I hope I see you again. Kapena mutinyanja, kutinza kaku onafuti, yavani dawe yaita li. Kopa nda iwe uza, niza kuza jabe fonsenika onafuti. Kwe tachokele nde kuda li, bene pata ti na yami. Niza kuza jabe fonsenika onafuti, nika onafuti. Nikaku onafuti, masanda tropiko olobuti. Then zutamaduose mafumiya mafuti, ku D S T V. You and me, we used to feel every moment, my dear friend. I miss you so much, yajama foda tinakopa, nikalan gana po niopa. Nuna mungandine zamikonka, wai ambuye smunatenge jabe ini. Masanga mwa basiya nasarache nina la. Remember back then, tikana kasa nka mvula, tiso kama tmm. Ka mvula kazalo, kelo tisananapo. So many things that we express, my dear friend. But now, just alone, telling this story of you and me and that song that we used to sing, and it goes like this. Mulungu adalise vanaenda, mulungu adalise vetiripo bevasala. Chikomboso chideta chikomboso, chikomboso chideta o. Na ti mulungu adalise idja de, yamene niza choka paziko ine. Chikomboso chisa sala, chikomboso, chikomboso chisa sala kutina ine ninalipo. Kurisi kunakumbuka, tinari jabe vosin, jabe vosin. Salache neka, ningo che kuridanee, batisiko isafika, tiza ka onano. Mga tambuye che alola, tiza kala che vosin iye. Mga niyo samava bisam tima, ama onunga kote eh eh. Nizi vani machita voibak, onwi ko papa munche. Jabe mulungu adalise vanaenda, mulungu adalise vetiripo bevasala. Chikomboso chideta chikomboso, chikomboso chideta o. Na ti mulungu adalise idja de, yamene niza choka paziko ine. Chikomboso chisa sala, chikomboso, chikomboso chisa sala kutina ine ninalipo. Na 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 ine ninalipo, poetu nezo chaayako. Tuma nimonezo imba, chikomboso chideta, chikomboso chideta o.
Thank you. Enough? Um, I didn't expect that. Another round of applause. It's always beautiful to see somebody who can fuse music and poetry together. I think it makes a beautiful fusion. I hope it's the right word, English. Okay, so um, the next poet, by the way, please stick on to your, to your phones. We are in the ten minutes. This is the last of our lineup, like, we only have about three, four more acts to go. So do not leave us, I hope you are enjoying as we continue to celebrate young people. And we mean young people, like, you've only seen young people, right? Uh, I was talking, I was asking a certain friend just recently, there was a show that we were watching, and the young people that came to perform were, they were young people when I was not a young people myself. Then we are young people together now. So I don't know if they are, they are, but we've brought you young people, that's just the point. Please help me welcome to stage SOP.
Uh, my name is SOP, the poet. SOP means uh, son of peace. I'm going to do a piece of poem, I gave the title, "Why." You see, I've always known from the start that was in my heart. We had the mob potatoed, my reach overheated, afraid of no man because I'm capable of breaking systems in Africa. Feel like a black man wearing black clothes, driving a black car with black tires, moving in a black earth, I wrote this poem raising a black pen, entering the blackout of the devil as I asked the black man in this black continent a black question, "Why?" Why are youths unproductive? Britain, my poverty, as the standbys in the sand were dim. They tried to fly high, but they can't, so they cry out blood in bottles of cash in their hands. Twelve years in school, just being told not to wait for another man. Become infected by bells and coke shells, ready to give for success. Friends, moving unnaturally gases and doing a deal with move with pangas and knives, ready to murder, just giving the top of a cutter in the government. Why? Why do we sit on our chairs made of cardboard like monkeys when the mob has seen the bus waiting for second-hand cars from China? Why? Why do we sleep twelve hours a day, becoming a part of the jokers waiting for a wet man to finally heal the disease? We are sick of us, as the theories of chemistry vibrating in our systems. Because right now, political parties are equivalent defeat of cars and the filling stations, and their leaders are drivers, busy romancing the bones of the salesmen up and down. And after twenty minutes, twenty-one seconds, twenty, twenty-one, they'll disappear in thin air with our diesel. But, why? Why do we justify our weaknesses as IMF codifies our life into tests? Because youths cannot magnify themselves and occupy the paradise god gift. Bombing bays posed and swelled, wrong is the notion that cause commotion. In a deep sadness, the dream turned to steel, a wave of violence. Right now, the demons of corruption seem quiet, but they're never quite silenced. They're waiting for a reason to awake, take an offer to break and come back to economy as we line up next day, ready to satisfy the unsatisfied pockets of lecturers as they gather bags and write oinsa. So in Zambia, some engineers cannot create, doctors cannot operate, lawyers cannot advocate, some teachers can't teach for fifty days on a series and now lessy. Papa thirty-first, if he energy, my buela like magic as they open their big spot mouths and close four hands, busy swiping the government's money from their banks. They are becoming shameless vouchers or getting paid for doing that. Some, some monkeys paint makeup on our faces every after five years. They tell us that they are pregnant with babies of prosperity, whilst in the actual sense, they are fibers of destruction. Bring me now, I'm so precious, you see? They praise us like kings, but after they win, tikapembako mantito, nama spola shipati ponya huaia. So in Zambia, the moma youth vapaki lako, nzaala ekurilako, mumala mwa bilako, mabawa sekurilako. Because we are always found on screens, watching Amoba, okotimoko tumoga. Voice eating my yo yo for lunch, namaz yo stima pembapaka pompi kawa neba. But we are busy listening to Pompe and Yoma for three hours. Our poverty is bitten and breaking the head of Zambia, satisfying the same, it says. I think you youths of Zambia, galibighead, SOP.
I distanced myself from the last slide, my head is not that big. But beautiful poem, as in, somebody, somebody, I was having a conversation with, I'm looking forward to them mentoring me at some point. They told me, you know, change starts from asking why? Why and more whys and why and why? As long as we continue to ask why, then we can continue to keep on answering that question and know where we're going after asking why. So guys, please keep asking why. One, the doctors who can't operate, the teachers who can't beat they. So we don't even know where it's going now, it's, it's becoming a whole circus and we're getting tired. Okay, so for our second last on the list uh, to perform for us as we celebrate our young people is a poet called Eliud. I hope I pronounced it correctly.
Hi everyone, and hi. My name is Eliud. I want to present to you a piece that I am a youth. Deep in the cores of my mind, a lot of creations. I learned to be an architect of my own relations. I'm keen of an education that sometimes I run out of patience. But isn't that characteristic of a mind of a youth? Anxious to know the truth, sometimes the last two, more importantly, to learn while the skies blue. You see, I'm full of energy, full of dreams, I can carry great certainty. The obstacles to all I admire becomes my greatest enemy. Learning my spirits free to explore and discover is what I love to keep company. My roots currently are making it hard for me to fall because they're running deep. Oh yeah, I am a youth, this is what I do. This is what I feel running in the intricate spaces of my body's bloodstream. Sometimes when I see what is on TV, I'm filled with great admiration for the simplistic details of what is before my eyes on that television. I envision myself in the shoes of those celebrities. Check my thoughts, inspiration. Is what I'm being inspired by really cool for me? I don't know, maybe. Should I research on that? Ah, no, I feel lazy. All she knows is that she's a young lady and once in a while she enjoys being crazy. Oh yeah, it's true, it's cool, it's how she knows she's living. This is what she's got from all this world has been giving. She begs you to differ. Well, she's a youth, YOLO. My parents keep telling me to focus on my education, saying, "Son, this is the only way you see your life running high in elevation. I should settle for academic dedication now and later can't celebration." The moment my best friend gets out of these and talks of his thoughts, I forget everything like I'm a patient of chronic amnesia. Now should I please him or please her? I'm about her, I mean my mother. The battles in my mind are more rigorous than the one we're two gathered. I seek to establish the codes, aside codes, to think where all this flows. It is hard to control the mental vices that pull and push my intellect and affect my decision. Oh yeah, they call her Miss Diva. She's always down for that party fever. She's got hundreds of followers on her Facebook and Twitter. She knows because of this, the treatment from her peers may be sometimes a little bit bitter. But she cares less than what she may interfere on a progress or what she may fear. Her spirits may be short a little, well, may cause you problems, but it's how she knows how she's living. Well, she's a youth. We only want to live like we are the ones who matter the most, but isn't that type of third problem? The juvenile has been one of the greatest concerns for a little one now. They state us in society on what it may feel or how proud. The reason comes from pronounced notion of an exact potion of the freedom the youths must be given with caution. The general statement that current generation holds no value of tradition and education is some of truth, but give rise to the opponent question. Who is to blame? Please give me the name. Why do the youths seem so poised to engage in games of life that have nothing to gain except confusion and pain in the lives of those who get fed to them? It's insane. Is my message plain? Of all the idiomies that are not willing to internalize or to verbalize that you recognize and realize that this is something plaguing us and our lives? Education, focus, dedication and constructive hard work is and should be the center of ninety percent of the youth's meditation. Why? The only way to build a strong building is when it is made with perfect articulation from an official language and mathematical calculation, which you can only develop from an education. The youth are the future indeed, but this depends on what they believe. We are the youth, we are the ones to build the next generation. We have the capability to develop this world more and more.
Being a youth in this, being a youth crying for change this time is like being a baby to a parent who cares this. Boo boo, boo boo, one point sitting, thirty million, go and be an artist, it's for empowerment. There's very little courtesy from the young people. Bush, online, air, space if you want. If like a moment of silence, he knows it will definitely stop. He holds on a little longer or like feeling oneself in water with enough composure, this noise will stop and you're out. Or like trying to suppress a sneeze, but be careful, you might rupture a vessel in your head or neck and die and we might remain protesting because it's not you, it's the system. So why play marcha for something that can help change? To close our show in celebration of young people, ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome one of the most brilliant writers you're going to meet here at Wetsmart, his name is Jurisika Zwey.
How are we doing? This is a Saturday, people, how are we doing? I'll be honest, if, anyways. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about dreams, but I hope you love dreams. The title of the poem is celebrating dreams, it's foolish. I want to bow down and worship the youths who with their tongues swinging wildly cut down, scaled down, corrupt forests, sentencing them to death, lost and abandoned, for fresh trees fruitful and selfless to grow and clothe queenly the ground. I want to stand up and clap my hands for the youths who become, or who become dragons, scattering fire where evil terminates, to ash burning these stones, these itchy leaves, these poisonous apples, for the mouths of men and women to not hug and hold the vow test of anarchy and injustice as ideas of romance or love or honor. I want to write on the skin of stars names of youths who stand when they are told to sit down by dictators, who raise their voices in screams and debate when commanded to never speak out. With the words, they recreate the world again into a song that soothes and unites, into a point. into a poem that teaches and waters. But wait, are these youths you and I? Do they exist? I don't think so. These are fictitious youths. None of these things are true. We instead have broken words that do not hold water, blind dreams that do not see. We are docile and docile and docile. We are obedient to tyrants, very grateful to tyranny. How foolish. We are sleepy, sleepy, sleepy. Celebrating dreams is foolish.
I did see your beautiful photo albums of the roads you constructed, our taxpayers' money. Though the new tag is your fix because you're Bali or maybe you're not Bali. I saw the bridges you built for us to walk on while you could barely mend bridges with me. Who is your vote? So it's pointless on my end since you can't fool me. The real voter is sitting where there is no power to watch television. You see visions on your abuse of power. These people get food and in gratitude, they vote for you. I hope we've all taken away something for today. First, we celebrated young people, right? Like, there were, there were young people, us, young people with empresses.